I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of Mexico and the symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures. Now turn the time over to Treasurer Floyd Prith with the indication.
Our chairman and members, as we turn the page today, would like to thank you for this beautiful, warm day and the opportunity to meet together as citizens and elected officials of our county. We pray that you would give us, God needs us in our life, a perfect vision on what we need to do for our community. Father, we ask that you would protect our country from those who seek to destroy it and our democracy. We ask, Father, that you would bless all of our families during this Thanksgiving season, that we will find the trinity of Thanksgiving and be able to gather in safety. We ask that you would protect our military, our fire, and our peace officers. And we ask these things with Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning to all those who were in attendance this morning. We will begin with public comments and announcements, and I would just offer some clarification. This first portion of public comments and announcements would be relative to... There are two portions for public comments this morning in our agenda. The first is general, and then the second would be involved with the ordinance that's on the agenda regarding medical recreational cannabis. So this first portion of public comments would be for business other than what may pertain to the ordinance. So I haven't received any written comments in that regard. Are there any public comments from the audience this morning? Yes, ma'am.
I'd also like to bring a few of my board members up here with me as well. So sure all of you know us, I'm Ashley Keating. We've got Jerry Strong, one of our newest board members. We've got Kat Davis and Becca Cannon. But today we want to present Eddie County with a plaque of just sincere appreciation for everything you guys have done for Carlsbad Main Street. It's because of you guys and your support that we're able to fulfill our mission, and so we just wanted to say thank you so much.
Present that to the chairman. Thank you very much. I think that what has been... Wes, there, a man of the era there. But arrange yourselves there so that you can... There you go. But I will say while we're taking care of this that Carlsbad Main Street has done an outstanding job in recent months, and that is evidenced by physically along the Main Street section. There are new benches, they're working on new lights, we have the new mural, we have the gazebo. I think the Thursday farmers and makers market has been a resounding success. Look forward to the continued efforts there. And the things that you have planned during the months of November and December, a real community effort for the Carlsbad community. And so congratulations and thank you very much. We'll continue to support Carlsbad Main Street. We work to support Artesia as well in those same efforts, because those are things that bring communities together. And that's... You folks are doing a great job, so thank you very, very much. We appreciate you.
Glad you didn't bring up the front of my office.
You know, I saw that they had stuck on the adobe, but I thought, you know, maybe you just leave the adobe exposed, it gives it that old rustic feel. But then they see you, and you're the old rustic view, so... No, but there is a lot of effort in, and I think it's showing in the community. So congratulations and thank you. Are there any other public comments, general business? Seeing none, let's move to item two. Proclamation of December as Drunken Drug Driving Prevention Month in Eddie County.
So would we like to read this proclamation and then take a vote to certify December?
Each of you.
Is that what we would like to do?
Yes, then yes.
Yes. Now Cindy, do you want to read this?
I can read this if you would like me to, I'll be happy to.
This is your deal, and I think we'll support it 100%, so...
Thank you. Proclamation, whereas every president of the United States since 1981 has shown a commitment to stopping impaired driving by proclaiming December as National Drunken Drug Driving Prevention Month. Every day, lives are shattered and lost on our nation's roadways as a result of impaired driving. Whereas two of the most celebrated dates in December, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, are among the most dangerous. Therefore, Eddie County is teaming up with the local DWI program and reminding you to be the one to celebrate safely this holiday season. Whereas the Eddie County Commission reaffirms our commitment to preventing tragedies from impaired driving by raising awareness of the importance to act responsibly, plan ahead, designate a sober driver, and arrange for a safe ride home. DWI is a crime, it is the law, and it is enforced. Whereas impaired drivers recklessly put others and themselves at risk. This holiday season and every day, we urge all those in Eddie County to choose wisely, act responsibly, drive sober, and employ friends and loved ones not to get behind the wheel impaired. Whereas we remember the victims of impaired driving. We pray for the grieving families of those whose lives have been taken and honor the law enforcement professionals who work to keep our roads safe and who are on the front lines of DWI, this violent preventable crime. Whereas we want all citizens of Eddie County to know that innocent drivers, passengers, cyclists, and pedestrians are endangered when impaired individuals get behind the wheel. We can and must prevent this senseless loss of life and property. The pain caused by one person's choice to drive impaired is often permanent. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners, on behalf of all of the citizens of Eddie County, proclaim December 2021 as Drunken Drug Driving Prevention Month in Eddie County, New Mexico. Proclaim the 16th day of November 2021. I would ask your support of this proclamation, taking a stand. We want to protect people on the roads. We encourage people, you know, 'tis the season, celebrate safely. Follow those protocols, plan in advance, designate a sober driver, arrange for a safe ride home. And I will stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions?
No, just thank you. Is there any sort of taxi service or anything that you're aware of, that people that we can... Information that we can disseminate? I know that the city of Carlsbad had something at one point, but...
Historically, for several years, on New Year's Eve, City of Carlsbad Transit System has offered free rides. They didn't do it last year because of the pandemic and things being closed. The year before that, they had 19 people who took advantage of that service. I do not know of Lyft or Uber that's available at this time. However, if you plan in advance, have somebody you can call. Make arrangements in advance. You know, even if you think, "I'm not going to be drinking." You get there, you have a drink, have a plan in advance, who am I going to call to come get me and drive me safely home? That's what it means to be responsible, responsible drinking, have a plan in advance. I can... Commissioner McCutcheon, I can contact the city and see if they will once again offer this in January and let you know.
Sure, that'd be great. I didn't know if there was anything like that. If you don't want a ride home with the city, then I'm sure the sheriff would be glad to pick you up, pick you home too.
You know, and to that point, through the years, I...
I might not be sure to lie. Yeah, I guarantee you, they'll be on it.
If you're not sure where you live, we might have a space for you. Good morning.
There you go.
Not a good space, but it's a space.
And it is never closed.
It's never closed.
Okay, I entertain a motion that we approve the proclamation of December as Drunken Drug Driving Prevention Month in Eddie County.
Second.
Motion's second, please call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Beard.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is service awards. We have seven awards, and unfortunately, three of them weren't able to attend, but we'll still recognize them. So we'll begin with Jesus Vasco's Sheriff's Office, 20 years. Congratulations.
All right. Better get a picture, they... Go picture some more.
Congratulations. Next, we have Victor Martinez from the sheriff's office, 15 years. Apparently Victor wasn't able to join us this morning. The next one is Cynthia Leva from the detention center. She's not able to join us, but she has 10 years service. Next is Elsa Ortega from the detention center, five years. Gilbert Barea from the detention center wasn't able to join us this morning, but he has five years service. I was misled, I'm sorry, Gilbert. Mr. Barea is here.
Well, let your way.
Huh?
Turkeys are awesome.
Okay, awesome.
Oh, look at him here.
Paparazzi everywhere.
This is a lot harder than I would.
Next is Samantha Turner from the detention center with five years service. Congratulations. And finally, Andrew Lopez Madrono from IT. He's not available this morning. Five years service. So we do photo op with the county commissioners, take a short break for the photo.
Yeah. We've got some serious service awards in those months.
Yes, no, maybe? Thank you, Commissioners, and congratulations again to all those service award recipients. I think I was doing my math here, and I think that's something like 85 years worth of service represented in those seven individuals. County certainly appreciates the dedication and service provided, so... All right. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for ordinance 21-107, ordinance regulating medical and recreational cannabis establishments, other cannabis businesses, production of cannabis and cannabis products. I would like to... Before we open the public hearing, I'd like to make note that the state of New Mexico passed statutes that provide for recreational cannabis, personal use, and commercial and retail cannabis establishments. The Eddie County ordinance recognizes that capability and opportunity and provides some terms and conditions by which that can take place within the county. And the ordinance provides some definitions for the terms that are in the ordinance, and it provides some conditions whereby those activities can take place in the unincorporated areas of Eddie County. The municipalities which have incorporated boundaries have their own ordinances. This ordinance does not apply to those areas, it applies only to the unincorporated areas of Eddie County. So for those that have public comments, if you focus and direct your comments to those provisions of the ordinance, that would be appreciated. So at this point, we'll open the... We'll ask the chairman to open the public hearing for this ordinance.
I entertain a motion that we open the public hearing, ordinance dash 21 dash 107. Motion's second, please call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Beard.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
All right. The next would be staff comments, so Mr. McCroskey, Mr. Hooper.
Morning, Commissioners. On October 5th, we had brought this ordinance before you for possible adoption. At that point, you chose to table that and send it back to the Planning and Development Advisory Committee for some wording clarifications and possibly other adjustments. We've taken it back to the Planning and Development Committee on October 20th. They made some adjustments to the ordinance. We adjusted some wording clarifications on that and are bringing it back to you as a highlight of what was adjusted in sections 3A and 3C. After comments from the public at the meeting, they chose to remove the word residence out of the ordinance there in that section regarding the 300 feet, which was one of the items that I believe we had had it sent back for, was the 300 feet, and having some adjustments made on the distances and how those distances were measured. We adjusted those distances to be measured from structure to structure rather than property line to property line. Also removed was item 7I in the old ordinance, or old version of this, that said no permit shall be issued to a drive-through. They chose to remove that out of it. We also did some adjustments, Mr. Tabor did, to items 7L and M under the variance and appeals procedures to allow those items to move to the Planning and Development Advisory Committee and get their recommendation before the items came before you all. We've, again, prior verified... Clarified, let me get the right wording here, on the top of the ordinance, on the title, to include unincorporated areas of Eddie County. We adjusted the definition of county to include unincorporated and describe that out as not being within the limits of the villages of Hope, Loving, City of Carlsbad, City of Artesia. And I believe that was about it. Mr. Tabor, also working with me, we've recommended a change on the definition of residence as well.
Depending what the commission does, you know, the language of a residence says, a place where someone lives is living. What if it's... Realtors got it for sale, and it's still a residence? So it's to clarify that, that it's a structure capable of habitation, going to be... Can be resided in. And so that was the only clarification made.
Any other comments, Steve or Wes?
I have no more.
No, sir.
All right, the next item would be public comments. And as usual, three-minute time limit, and comments, we ask that they're respectful and courteous. So we'll open it for public comments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Yvette Leos. I am the owner of Sebutz, a dispensary. Unfortunately, I know the ordinance, the 300 feet, we're just going to talk about that, whether it's going to pass or not. But what I am here for is, like I said in the beginning, I was forced to quit this industry. I did not say names at first. It was brought to my husband's attention again that I was in this room speaking about my industry. There's a lot of policies that have been violated. And we're gonna... I don't know who wants these, but you guys could have one. I'm going to start off with House Bill 2, page 53. Conduct allowed pursuant to a Cannabis Regulation Act shall not in itself constitute grounds for a holder of a professional or occupational license to be subjected to professional discipline... Oh my gosh, I'm so mad. For providing advice, service related to cannabis establishments, applications to operate cannabis establishments, that it is based under the federal law. It's right here. I hate to do this to you, but Mark Cage did this to me, okay? My husband was up for the commander's position, and Victor Martinez went and brought to his attention that my husband couldn't be the commander if his wife was in the cannabis industry, right? Got to understand, I started this in 2009. My husband was a rookie with the sheriff's department. As he evolved, I was evolving. Medical cannabis industry, 2009, 2010, was my first endorsement in this industry, my husband being a deputy. Then he went up, and he became an agent with the task force.
Jake, can you keep your comments directed to the ordinance, please?
Yes, okay. Well, the ordinance is that policy should never, ever be broken. I got this from Quantico, Virginia, at a DEA, because Dr. Musselman, the guy that I started with, his brother-in-law, worked for DEA Haida in Quantico. So I have a lot of that right here, what they got me. So policies that... And I know this is against the ordinance, but right here in the Eddie County Sheriff's policy, I'll just go directly to it. The sheriff's office will not tolerate retaliation against employees...
We're outside the ordinance.
Okay, well, then we will go ahead, and I'll... Okay, we're not here to talk about the sheriff's office. What I'm going to tell you is it's been brought up to my husband again. I've never, ever put a lawsuit, because my lawyer, the company's lawyer...
You're out of time, thank you very much.
Okay, well, I know you guys were going to do this, but it's going to happen. And if it's brought up to my husband again, I will sue you, the county. Actually, you should, I'm going to take...
Thank you.
...if you violate every single policy. You, and I'm going to do that...
Thank you, very much.
And it's going to go out, to make sure that you're voting out.
Do we have any other public comments? Any other public comments? No?
Oh, it's okay if you do.
So I'm not going to lie, I have missed the last few meetings. I've had several family members pass away recently because of alcohol. And one just last night, so excuse me for... I'm probably going to ramble, I do that a lot. Two of the women on the board know me. However, due to the 300 feet ordinance, I'm not as familiar with the ordinance as I should be, and I know that we're supposed to stick to it, but I will say this, guys. When it comes to like drive-throughs and stuff like that, a lot of these medical cannabis users can't walk. They shake, it's hard for them to pick up. So it's just like CVS pharmacy drive-through, it's medicine for them. And a lot of people that don't understand that it is medicine, there are cannabis consultants in the area that can teach you. CBD itself is a medicine. I do understand that this has been referred madness for many years, but alcohol is a much bigger problem, let's be honest. Let's not... We're talking, we're living in like the DWI capital. But as far as drive-throughs and 300 feet ordinances and things like that, nobody's... I mean, there's enough regulations, or there's... Regulations should be on growing. I agree with that, shouldn't be seen. It should be in a, you know, a stable place, or, you know, your neighbors can't see it. However, it is a right to grow your own medicine. It's not going to be where you're not, you don't have to alter it, you don't have to... It just grows straight from the ground. CBD is another medicine that comes from that plant, not just the marijuana, and it has helped a ton of people, a ton, from little things to gout and anxiety to big things like cancer. And if you look at the scientific data, it's there. So a lot of these... This is the fourth meeting. I think these are... They were far-reaching with a lot of these ordinances. I apologize if I'm overstepping my line here by saying that, but there's a lot more that we could be focusing on in this city. I've been here for four years, and I've seen the growth, and I come from a metropolis like Houston. And I just, I really wish that these would cease. Like, I understand, like the drive-through thing, okay, there's a lot of these, our patients, it's already legal, okay? It's like, you guys are like, kind of, like pushing up against us, like, you know, like, I don't even use the drive-through, but I see people in these dispensaries. I'm a business owner, I'm a successful business owner. I have a dying child in Houston that I don't skip a beat, I go every two weeks, right? But I'm a medical cannabis user, and I work hard. And I don't let my clients down, I'm not sitting in my house smoking, like you guys, I guess like a lot of people think. And so it's hard to... I can't even get my boards out, I'm almost out of time, I don't want to get clicked on, but... There you go. Sorry.
What was your name for the record? I don't know.
I'm Kendall McCarty.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little everywhere.
Other comments?
My name's Libby Smith. I've been working in the cannabis industry since 2017. After I was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis, I realized it changed my life. So I will always show up to show you guys what this is, what it's about. I'm very, very passionate, I am one of those consultants Kendall was talking about. I help people put them on regimens, things like that. As far as like drive-throughs go, because I know I haven't really touched on that before, working... Working in a dispensary, we have a lot of people that are unable to walk in. And a lot of times, um, when we were trying to find a different space, one that, you know, was more accommodating to handicap, people, landlords will not rent to cannabis facilities. And for personal reasons, business reasons, that's their prerogative. Either way, they will not rent to us and we are, um, unable to really help everybody. And then not being able to have a drive-through really is a disservice to those people, um, that, you know, can't walk or can't get their wheelchair in the door, or maybe don't want to be seen because there's still stigma on it and they don't want to be made to feel bad, but they want to feel better. And so, we're unable to help those people. If you go to, um, our Greenleaf, which is a net, another medical dispensary in Roswell, they have a drive-through. It used to be, I don't know, like a sushi drive-through place, um, I don't know. But it accommodates to those people, you know, um, I have an infant, but I need my medicine. I can't, I don't really want to have to get her out, take her in, you know? So it's not, it, it's just better to have things like that so we can help more people. And at the end of the day, um, and I know I'm not just speaking for myself and cannabis, I'm speaking for all those other ones that are coming out and speaking, and the hidden ones. We are very passionate about this thing and we just, we just want to help. Um, and again, my name is Libby Smith, I'm a cannabis consultant, I'm here to educate, I'm here to help and make a difference, period. So, I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to county attorney comments, questions.
I don't have any questions or comments. I think, depends on if the commission has questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Next item then would be county commissioner, questions and comments.
Okay, do we have a spot in here for your comments as well? Mr. County man?
I could, I could.
You could slip under, yeah.
Sure. I'll, I think that, um, Planning and Development Group took the instruction from the commission, um, back and worked it again. They had a public hearing, input was received, modifications were made. Some of the modifications that wound up in the ordinance, um, weren't exactly aligned with the comments and instructions from the commission. But, they took the public comment and presented this, um, recommendation which was published, has been published for two weeks and is now ready for your review and consideration. I think the ordinance allows for the capabilities provided by state statute. It sets out the terms and conditions by which those establishments can work under that state statute. And provides provisions that would, um, also incorporate the needs or expectations from residents within the county proper that are not part of the incorporated municipal areas. So, um, I think, I think the ordinance provides a basic level of instruction and, and rules as to how this, these businesses can work within Eddy County, um, in the unincorporated areas of Eddy County.
Very much. Mr. Cross and Mabel, or?
Yeah, I, uh, I held a town hall meeting, uh, last Wednesday. Commissioner Beare, uh, with me, we've got a lot of comments from both sides of the table. The residents of rural Eddy County and the cannabis representative that was there. So we had about a dozen people show up, hoping that it would be more, but, but we at least got both, a feel for both sides. The thing that I found from the comments at my town hall meeting was that the people in the cannabis industry, the representative, he, he said that the 300-foot was not going to make a difference one way or the other to them. But, the comments that I got from the residents of rural Eddy County, it does make a difference to them. So, my thought is that we should give the residents of Eddy County, rural Eddy County, that comfort of knowing that there's not going to be a commercial cannabis operation right next to their property line. So, I don't think that the 300-foot is going to hurt the cannabis industry. I think that, uh, it's going to help the security of the people, knowing that there is some measure of separation between them and a commercial cannabis operation. So, uh, myself, I am for the 300-foot.
Certainly in favor of the 300-foot. I've, uh, got one question about the drive-throughs. Is that in our ordinance? There's no drive-throughs? Okay, I thought that was. It's in it. Pretty much be limited to the city. I mean, I don't see.
We have no jurisdiction within any city.
Well, I know, that's kind of where I was going. I don't see where that would have any bearing at all within the unincorporated county. And, I'm with Ernie and the residents in the county, I don't see a problem with a 300-foot offset from a resident, however we define it. I think in the state statutes, if I'm not mistaken, one of the state statutes says that you can't have one of these facilities in a residential area. Is that?
I don't think those provisions are, I think the state statutes are very, um, they don't, they're silent to that aspect of the.
That came from one of the.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Cannabis people at the same meeting we were in.
The statutes provide the provision for personal and recreational use and set up a licensing board to permit commercial retail cannabis. And that's pretty much where it stopped.
I don't think we're looking at any restrictions on that by saying you can't have a.
No, we're.
Retail outlet.
By law, we're not allowed.
Area within 300 feet of a residence, so, I'm very much for putting that back in there.
Let's shuttle down, Commissioner Cordova.
I, you know, I feel that putting the 300-feet back into a residence, although I don't think it's going to affect many people out in the unincorporated areas, I do think that it could be, it could be an issue for a business owner in the cannabis industry. I, I like the ordinance as it stands, as far as the minimum separation distance from religious assembly church, library, cultural center. And again, I don't think it's going to affect anybody right now, but I don't want it to affect anybody in the future. I like how that part of it reads, and in regards to the drive-through unit, I think that it should be allowed. And again, I don't think this is going to affect anybody in the county, but I, well, and let me ask this, is the variance option still available?
Yes, absolutely.
And, so, can you just kind of go through the variance again, on what that process is?
So, for example, um, let's say that the 300-feet was in, from a residence. And they take the measurement and it's two hundred and ninety-five feet. So, that person would have to apply for a variance through the county. And the steps that would be taken is that they would come up to the planning department, state what variance they've, what issues they have with the ordinance and what's going to be in violation of that. We would then schedule a PND meeting and we would take it before PND. And then they would make a recommendation to the commission. And, but then the final decision of that variance would be with the commission.
Another example would be if that resident wanted to establish a commercial business and they had a 300-foot radius around them, they could come for a variance and seek that variance.
Anything that would violate the, the ordinance, um, they can come and ask for a variance.
And that's on an individual basis, yes. And I know PND, this, when it went through PND, they removed the residence portion from this ordinance. I like how that reads. I can understand the concern about drive-through. Because I do feel that, you know, I think of medical marijuana as a medication. And I feel that we allow drive-through pharmacy, I see this similar. And so I do feel that that should be available to patients.
As, as medical or as recreational?
Yeah.
Well, and, I mean, so what would, how we would separate is they would have to present their card. Because medical, if you're, for medical use, you still have to present your card. And you still have to see your provider once a year, they have to sign off on it. So I mean, in essence, your medical purpose is no different than if they're picking up your regular routine medications at the plant. It's still a doctorate order card. And I feel that should be available.
That's not what we're discussing here because it's all.
You can put that in the ordinance, you can make the pharmacies say that they can only go through the drive-through with a medical card.
But Wes, there, there aren't any, there aren't, today, there aren't any pharmacies in unincorporated Eddy County.
True, true. And that's, you know, we have to.
All of those are within the municipalities.
Right, right.
There was quite a bit, sorry, Chairman. That, there was quite a bit of conversation about this issue as far as, uh, letting medical patients do it rather than both. And, and basically, the conversation was how do we regulate that? As, as a code enforcement officer or as, uh, a deputy?
Right.
So it would make it really tough.
It would make it difficult.
Yeah.
I understand that.
And it'd be a little different than so, some medications in that there's no way to measure impairment as, as well. And I mean, I understand that other, other medications can come with impairment as well. There's, the, the, I think that, I think the drive-through comes with a lot of, would come, come with a lot of liability there. Anyways, sorry, Wes, did you have?
Um, I want to thank the, the two ladies that, that are still here and had good public comments. Uh, I want to start, because it's interesting what y'all made me think this morning, because I'm anti-recreation. I, I'm, I'm against marijuana. I do see value in medical. I have heard the value, I've, I've, I get it, right? I think the one comment, even though you thought you were all over the place, I, I did appreciate the, because at first I was thinking of a drive-through meda- medical marijuana, or not medical, marijuana. And I guess the only reason I was thinking of it, because our ordinance does say regulating medical and recreational cannabis, as a drive-through liquor store, which is against the law in New Mexico. Uh, so, I would think those two should, should pair well together and you shouldn't be able to drive through. Your comments about, uh, folks whom aren't able to walk, and, and I understand a lot of medical marijuana possibly is for that. I mean, I also know that, um, you know, we can get deep in the weeds here and I won't because I do have some issues with the way cards are handed out to some extent. Uh, I think there should be some better regulations by the state to where, I'll just leave there, regulations on the state. But I do see some value in folks whom probably are unable to walk or, or do things like that in possibly allowing it. But I also understand that the fact of, come on, I mean, that's going to put an onus on the, on the business owners to make sure they're doing it properly. And we all see, we can sit here and say, oh yeah, we'll do that. The state, to answer your other question, why are we doing this today? The state has dumped this. They passed a bad bill with absolutely no regulation in it, with no ramifications in it. They have done a poor job, as usual. And they've dumped it on the counties, just like they did with the, the cameras, just like everything else. They dump it out to us to figure it out, and then they go hide because you're not allowed, you're not allowed to go talk in Santa Fe. So understand that right now, only in the county. So, they've dumped this on us to figure it out. So how do we figure that onus out to make sure those businesses, because the sheriff can't check them because that's against the rules against, according to the, to the state of New Mexico. So we've been put in a, in a situation to where I do see great value in having medical drive-through. I do see that value. And this is from someone that's anti-oldway, right? But I do see that value because I, I think that's probably something that could, but how do we do that? I, I don't know. And that's what, that's what this whole bill that they dumped through, that really we're not going to have rules until next session, which should only be a budget session, but it's going to have to be taken up with rules, on a bill that they passed that's garbage, that we're trying to figure out how to regulate. So I'm having a hard time with that because I'm, I was, I appreciate y'all's comments, I really do, because I didn't think about it. When I walked in here, I was dead-set against drive-through because I put it with liquor and I got no issue with that. But now I can't, because there are separations there. I do like driving through to pick up medication if I ever need it. So I got to think for a second, I mean, you're going to have to come back, but that's the problem, right? I mean, there is no way, I guess we could separate them, but how do you stop it from happening? Because then you as a business owner has to, they have to say, oh yeah, that's how we'll do it.
So, if I might interject, there are, that capability potentially would exist within the municipality where medical marijuana establishments exist today, right? A capability exists. In the future, if a cannabis establishment decided that was business, part of the business they wanted to do, they still could have the opportunity to come back and seek a variance for that option in their business that, um, would provide the, the service that you described. Um, so the ordinance would allow for that if, if a cannabis establishment did that in the unincorporated, decided they wanted to build something like that in the unincorporated portion of Eddy County. So, that would give you the provision for a while to see how, how that worked. And then, you know, the, the ordinance can always be modified through the ordinance process. Would have to be brought back up in the public hearing and whatever modification. But this, this would give you the provision for the, kind of the ground floor, if you will, until we see how this progresses with Eddy County, other counties, state of New Mexico. It's still pretty early days in this regard, so, something to consider in your.
Question, I know that I'm not prepared, but.
Well, no, we're, we're, no, no ma'am, no ma'am. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I asked you very politely to be quiet. That's because you were talking, that'll be enough, thank you very much, but we appreciate you. So we'll continue to discuss here amongst ourselves, but, um, so, I, I like Commissioner Cross and Commissioner Beare support the 300-foot from a residence. I think that's important to protect the property values of, of anybody in Eddy County. And Ms. McCarty, if you have one and you live in the county and you want to put one next to yours, I think you can come to the, you can come to the, uh, to the PND and submit a variance and build a cannabis facility right next to your house if you don't have anybody close, so. But I, but I mean, but, but there are, you know, there are, um, ways that we will, there is a process through which we can go to make sure that we are able to maintain property values and make sure that we are able to protect the other fifty thousand people in Eddy County who are not, who are not here and still maintain y'all's right to run your business. Because I, I don't, I think we probably agree on most things. And we don't want government overreaching or anything like that, but at the same time, government's only job is to protect one citizen from another citizen. And that's the, that's the quandary that we're in, just as Commissioner Henry described. And the state just gave us this terrible bill. And, you know, it's going to make about seventy-five million in the first three years and cost sixty million to institute, I mean, not just. I mean, that just makes no sense at all. And so, we still have to go back to the fact that it is still illegal federally. And we just have to have enough, enough, enough tools in the bag in order to be able to navigate these difficult waters. And so, I am, I am not in favor of the drive-through. If it were only, if it were only a medical purpose, I could see that a hundred percent, because I drive through Walgreens and pick up a prescription. That's fine. But recreation is a whole different deal, because you can't even measure impairment. And, you know, if you're serving alcohol, you've got to measure impairment. Now, you can drive across in Texas, where they're more free, I guess, and drive through and pick up your liquor over there if you want. But in New Mexico, that's not the case. So I, I align with, I align with, with, uh, I think it's section nine. I align with section nine here. So, um, I, I, I like, I like section nine in there. There is, you know, let's say there's a, a, a medical-only facility that's being put up in the county, and you want to come for, for a variance with that. I don't see any reason why that wouldn't go through. And say, hey, we're doing medical, um, cannabis-only, you can drive through, we'll come and get the variance. I mean, there's, there's a process, there's a process, um, to allow for an exception. And, but I, I, I do, I do think the three hundred foot from a residence is important. We need it from a church, park, school, um, residence, you know, just like it says in here. I think residence is the only thing that's in there. And I'm glad we changed the three hundred foot from a property line, because that was just, that was just a taking. You'd have to have ten acres. You know, ten acres is six sixty by six sixty. So you'd have to build it right in the middle of six sixty by six sixty, and you would have ten acres. That's just ridiculous. But, um, you know, I, I think it's a, I think it's a common sense, I think it's a common sense deal here. And, and that's what I would like to put in, in the ordinance. Personally, as, as Commissioner McCutcheon. I'd like to, I'd like to leave it as it is and add that.
I, I'd like to make the motion to do that, to add the three hundred foot from, offset from residence.
Okay.
Can I second that? I mean, can we do that at this point?
So if, if you're through with Commissioner comments, the next, the next item is to entertain a motion from the board about the ordinance. So.
So, I would like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as written, except to add the three hundred foot offset from one occupied residence to another.
Drop occupied.
Occupied or occupied.
Occupied, occupied, occupied.
Okay, we have, we have a.
So, just for clarification, we would incorporate the definition.
Definition of residence.
Clean up resi- definition for residence in the definition section, and then that would be clear in, in, uh, section three.
Yes, three hundred foot off.
Sure, okay.
Okay, so the motion is, I think, just a reverse, a motion that through that we approve the ordinance as written, adding in the three hundred foot setback from resident to resident, or from business to resident within the unincorporated areas of Eddie County. Okay? Do you have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Please call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
No.
Henry?
Yes.
All right. Um, the next item is to adjourn the public hearing on the ordinance.
Motion, second. Please call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you all for your input.
I do thank you very much.
And coming to the meeting and everything.
Sorry for speaking over the place.
Sorry. Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate you.
And I don't own a business, I mean, as far as campus. I own a different business.
Well, just, yeah, as an example, so.
That hammer works.
That hammer works, yeah, yeah, yeah. Keep, keep, keep making that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's pretty precious.
Okay, let's move on to the training agenda. Item number one is to approve the special commission meeting minutes from November nine, twenty twenty-one.
It's not working, man.
Oh, these are different. I missed my little button.
Oh, is that what?
Um, all right, we're going to approve the special commission meeting minutes. Let me, let me find where I'm at here, sorry.
Here on the page.
There we go.
Training agenda, item number one.
All right. Entertaining motion, we approve special commission meeting minutes for November nine, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
It's time.
Cordova?
Upstairs.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, next item is the expense approval report for October twenty twenty-one.
Questions, comments? Entertaining motion, we approve expense approval, expense approval report for October twenty twenty-one. Motion, second, please call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, item number two is the treasurer's report, is for your information, uh, from the treasurer. Item number three, the September twenty twenty-one revenue report, Ms. Roberta Smith.
I've got a, I've got a question as we're moving here. When we came to that meeting, we didn't approve the minutes for the prior meeting.
That is correct, because, because they weren't ready, for one thing. We had the election, and then the, the cutoff date to get them submitted was cut short.
Okay.
So they are almost ready, and they will be on the next.
So we'll have those on, on the following meeting. Okay, okay, good, yeah, yeah.
Apologize for that.
Just making sure I didn't.
We're working on it.
The ladies, the ladies wouldn't let you get by without them. They'll, they'll.
I'm not pushing, I'm not pushing, I just.
Okay, we all trust.
Good question, thank you.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Roberta, revenue report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the September twenty twenty-one revenue report for gross receipts tax, the county collected two point six million dollars. Um, I did want to point something out. Um, the state had shifted to a new online system. So for the month of July, for our July's distribution, we were short ten days for our distribution. And then for August's distribution, we had an extra twenty days in there. So that's why on July's distribution, you'll see it's just barely over two million, where August is quite a bit over for three million. Um, but averaging those out, it's around two point five million. So we've basically been on target these last three months. It was just a shift in the days and the reporting for their new online system.
We didn't have a big surge, we just, GRT has been relatively steady for this part of the fiscal year.
Right, and currently, as we sit for September, we're about thirty-five percent collected on GRT totals, so quite a bit over the twenty-five percent.
Anybody have any questions or comments for revenue report September twenty twenty-one?
Nope.
Roll on gas.
Oh, sorry. Are we just breezing through that?
It's the most exciting part.
The big money.
All right, let's see what I can say about it. See if I'm part of their numbers.
For September, we collected four point seven million dollars. Um, that is roughly about five point eight million barrels for that month at about sixty-eight dollars per barrel. Um, of course, October's already happened, so that's about sixteen point eight at sixty-nine dollars. Um, there probably will be a slight drop-off for November, because for August price, we dropped down to about sixty-four dollars. So it may be, you know, two, three hundred thousand dollar drop. Um, but gas is also up quite a bit. For September, it was at four point four, four dollars and forty-five cents. Um, so, we are about forty-three percent collected. October, we're going to be at sixty-two percent collected for oil and gas. And, uh, I would beg to say that by December, we're going to be pretty close to our twenty-eight million target already, by December for oil and gas. So we're going to be.
Thirty-five doesn't look too bad, does it?
No, thirty-five's coming pretty easy. And that's all, that's only half the fiscal year.
Right.
Yeah, well, we're fifty percent done.
And commodity prices have been very firm last couple of months, um, trading, trading just under eighty dollars a barrel and over five dollars.
At, at one point, it was over eighty-four, I mean, it was like eighty-four something.
Yeah, so, so the average for the month, the averages have been very high. Um, the average for October WTI was higher than, you have to go clear back until November of twenty fourteen to have the same crude oil price. Gas price wasn't that high then, but, so, production volumes are steady, increasing slightly. Commodity prices are much firmer than they have been previously, so watch the space.
And with the price up, the way it is right now, all those not, uh, completed, uncompleted, drilled, uncompleted wells will start be, start to be completed.
Depleted some of that inventory during this past year, um, because through the COVID pandemic and shutdown. Um, they, they took a large chunk of the, the docks and completed them. Probably weren't drilling, but the drilling rigs, uh, we dropped some last week. I think we'll pick some back up this week, we'll see.
But didn't, at the oil and gas summit, they were saying there's still something like twenty-three, twenty-four hundred?
Correct.
Duckwells.
Correct. There, there were upwards of four thousand.
Yes.
But there, there's still, there's still a large inventory of drilled, uncompleted wells out there.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And the rig paces picked up a little bit, steady, not like it was before, but you just see the activity lower around towns, like indicative of a more robust.
I live on that loving highway, and I can tell, uh, coming into work every morning, whether.
Like watching the Johnson grass?
Yeah.
You know?
It is.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and, and New Mexico's behind Texas. I went to Whataburger at nine thirty a couple of weeks ago. I guarantee you, no oil's eighty-five dollars in Midland. So, it was, it was a completely different showdown there. I mean, I waited thirty minutes to get a hamburger.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock at night. So, uh, New Mexico's just a little pacing, pacing seems to be just a little behind. Uh, Texas has ramped up a lot quicker.
I wonder why.
Well, I mean, they have a choice. They're drilling in the oil area instead of.
They're going to get jobs started. You guys are just getting jobs.
All right, revenue, revenue, revenue looks good.
Okay, entertaining motion that we approve the September twenty twenty-one revenue report. Motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Because you got all excited.
God, frigging, I'm banging my gavel on her, I'm a crazy person.
Item number four, budget versus actual for September revenue expenses, Ms. Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the month of September, for our quarter end, we, countywide, we're about forty percent collected in revenue, twenty-five percent expensed. Uh, however, um, a little less than half of both of those numbers are transfers. We had about twenty-one million dollars in transfers. So without transfers, we stand at about, um, twenty-three percent collective, a little bit under the twenty-five percent, and we only have about thirteen percent expense, so quite a bit under on the expense side. For general funds, we're a little bit over. We're about twenty-seven percent collective for general fund. Obviously, that's because of oil and gas and GRT. On the expense side, there's only a couple departments, one in particular vector, they're just a little bit over. Uh, the, really, the reason for that is they have not very a big budget, and they had two big capital purchases, so that's why they're slightly over. Um, overall, general fund does sit at forty percent. However, uh, twenty million dollars of that thirty million dollars were transfers, uh, so we're quite a bit under about thirteen percent. For road funds, um, obviously, we've, uh, transferred in a hundred percent of our transfers, and they're sitting at about thirty-four percent collected and about ten percent expensed.
Any questions? That all?
That is it.
For the buzzword's actual. Questions? Exactly, we'll have enough, uh, money for a southeast loop bridge at some point, maybe. You're just throwing that out there. Let's no further questions, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve the budget, budget versus actual September revenue and expenses.
So moved.
Second.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard? Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number five is, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one first quarter lodgers report, lodgers tax report, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the first quarter lodgers tax report, our beginning cash, which was also obviously a rollover, we had two hundred and seventy-six thousand. We finished the quarter just slightly above at two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We had collected thirty-two thousand twelve dollars in lodgers tax for the quarter, and we spent just slightly under at about thirty-one thousand dollars. Um, we had two events, the Blazing Targets Benefit Shoot and the United Way Eddie County Skeet Shoot, um, along with our lodgers tax audit ending for twenty twenty, we ended up paying that out too. So those were the three expenses for the quarter.
Any questions on the first quarter lodger tax report?
No questions on the report. Did we say, uh, several months back that we were going to use some of the lodgers money to light up our Eddie County signs coming into town?
I think we did. Didn't we discuss?
Yeah, we did discuss that. That would be a Jason Burns question, or, no, they were, he was the one doing this.
He's in the back of the class, not paying attention, so.
It's turn to ask for something.
Yeah. Welcome to the meeting, Mr. Brown.
What was the question? Sorry.
I had a question about, we, we had discussed doing, uh, like solar lights on the welcome to Eddie County signs coming into town. Do we have any information? I had just thought about this over the weekend.
Yes, we do. We, um, we do have quotes for those. We've, yes, we do. It'll be good. We're going to go ahead and put those on. So, we, we've talked with DOT a little bit, um, they had a few concerns. We've, we've since worked those out. We got a meeting with them this week, and we'll, we'll be able to work those issues out and go ahead and get those on, so.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion that we approve the first quarter lodger's tax report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, please call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next item, a, a report from Ms. Roberta, uh, regarding donation summaries to Eddie County by the oil and gas industry. It was a question that was raised at commission last meeting, last regular scheduled meeting. And this is the information that Roberta has, specific for Eddie County. Um, we'll present that, and then I have a couple of comments.
Yes, this was, um, we brought this, um, due to Commissioner Henry's, uh, comment on what kind of donations that Eddie County has received, and not only Eddie County, but other agencies, City of Carlsbad, City of Artesia, schools. Um, I did reach out to all of those agencies. We do have some preliminary, preliminary numbers from them. We're also going to be reaching out to the oil and gas industry themselves, um, to have them provide us, um, that agency information, so we can bring that back to you, uh, at a later date. But in regards to Eddie County, strictly Eddie County, here are all the donations that we have received in the last five years. It's close to ten million dollars. And it's broken out, um, by the companies. Um, and you can see there on the left-hand side what department within the county they have donated to. Obviously, the majority has been the fire departments, volunteer fire departments, fire service, road department, sheriff, uh, and emergency management. Those are the main departments that they've been donating to. So quite a bit of donations, um, the bigger donations we have received, um, were to fix some roads up. We had two big donations for roads. Um, the other big donations, uh, have been to the Sheriff's Department and Fire Services for safety equipment and other supplies. So, we just wanted to bring this to you, so you had a summary, um, in case you wanted to take it, Commissioner Henry, or just have it. And we'll be getting you that other information hopefully soon.
And just to follow up on Roberta's comments about balance of information, um, this is donation directly to Eddie County. Uh, I think your, your earlier question was a little broader in a reflection of co- contributions to the community. And there, there, we believe that that's as significant, if maybe not more, than what's represented here. They do a lot of that quietly behind the scenes, um, with other private entities, organizations, whatever. I mean, that doesn't include their volunteer time, um, whether doing a public service project individually or in conjunction with a local government. Um, uh, they very much want to be part of the community, and they, hate to use the term, but they kind of put their money where their mouth is in, in, in making those contributions of time and monetary donations. Um, one, one that's not reflected here are schools. Um, they, they're very generous in contributing to individual schools, school districts, teachers, to try and help, um, promote that capability. Um, STEM is a, has been a large focus in recent months and last couple of years, both in Eddie County and in southeast New Mexico. Significant contributions in that regard, so. They, they are good partners. in that regard. So they, they are good partners and so we're gonna reach out to their public and government affairs people. They're sometimes reluctant to share that information. Um, we'll talk to them about, look, we're, we're not, we're not trying to, we're trying to help raise the visibility of your contributions in the community. We don't necessarily care about the individual contributions or the individual agencies as much as we want to be able to represent what industry is doing in our communities. So totals, whatever, to try and keep it anonymous and, and not single anyone out. But, um, so we'll, it, it, it may take a little teasing, but I think we'll, that they'll, once they understand our objective, I think they'll be happy to share with us. So.
If I can. I think this is so important for a lot of reasons, but a- as we all hear all the time, especially, and this is, I think this needs to go out to Carlsbad and Artesia as well. I mean, Artesia's a little different. We're, we've had oil and gas for a really long time and just get it. But I hear so many times, well, they destroy the roads, why don't they fix it? Well, they do. Ten million dollars towards the sheriff's office. And those are services that, uh, that I understand that they, we were, oil and gas is huge. Those are the services that are affected a great deal and they contribute to help offset that. They see that. So I think getting that out to the local residents so that as they say, well, well, they're the ones that tore up the road, have them fix it. Well, they do contribute. Not only by their tax dollars, that might come back to us if, if, if Santa Fe so, is so gracious and might give us some, though they directly impact it, which is a bigger impact to some extent because we don't have to go beg for our money back, um, to get it. As well as schools. I can't wait to see that number. But that's a, it's a huge number, ten million dollars that write back to helping the community that, that they're a part of. So, uh, the more we can get those kind of numbers out as well as the Arrowhead study to show what great partners they are and maybe help local folks see, oh, wow, we didn't realize they donated X to the schools and, and they don't get the, the thing. So thank you so much for doing this already and I look forward to the, the next group of numbers.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is the approval, disapproval of an indigent burial by Ms. Veronica.
Thank you, Roberta.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I am looking for approval for an indigent burial for Artesia's Tapingan Sound Funeral Home.
Comments or questions? Entertaining motion that we approve the one indigent burial. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Veronica.
Okay.
Item number eight is the resolution and agreement consent agenda. If there's anything that you want to pull or discuss or-
Any items to inform?
I have none.
No, I don't want.
Entertaining motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
So this?
Motion second. Please call the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova? Henry?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Um, item number nine then would be the elected official and department updates.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I just thought I'd give a quick update on the Southeast Loop. Um, we've got phase one almost completed. There's a little bit of guard rail that needs to be, be put up. I think they finished, um, putting the signs up yesterday. Um, in phase two, which will bid in the next month, we will finish phase one. There's a topping on top that, that needs to go from where the old US refinery came in to the new US refinery. Um, there's some turnouts that we're, we're gonna put in and so we wanted to wait to put that final coating on it. So we're gonna do that in phase two, along with, uh, about four point five miles of reconstruction, uh, further south. So, and then, uh, phase three will be right on the heels of that. We'll probably, uh, bid that out two months after the bid comes out on phase two. So we should be rolling. Phase three will get us within five hundred and fifty foot, should, as long as the numbers come back right. Um, should get us within five hundred and fifty foot of, uh, New Mexico Thirty-One.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Great job.
The departments. Elected officials. All quiet on the western front. All right. Legislative updates. Mr. Fanning.
All right, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman. Uh, just gotta give you a quick update, what things are going on. Uh, there's still a lot of the interim committee meetings that are reporting right now, especially last couple of days. We've heard from Legislative Finance Committee, also science, science and technology and telecommunications, uh, committees have been meeting. Uh, we are seeing that, uh, this afternoon, DOT will actually be presenting in front of LFC on some of the reports. Basically, these meetings are, as some of you may or may not know, are actually a compilation of what they're getting ready to present for their budgets during the special, uh, during the thirty-day session. Uh, we're still looking at the redistricting. Uh, projected date is December the sixth for that legislative, uh, uh, hearing, special legislative meeting, I should say. Uh, all those maps have been presented online. You can look those up, uh, but we all know that the legislature, when they meet, will have the prerogative to change those things and do what they need to do with them or they decide to do. I still try to, uh, remain optimistic about this and maybe I'm just fooling myself, but I hope I'm not. Because of the committee, uh, that was formed during the last session to look at this redistricting, there has been a lot of public input out there and I, I'm hoping that that public input will have some influence on the decision that the legislators will make. Uh, the rules committee will be the committee that we'll need to be watching during that special session. Uh, they will be the ones that will probably craft and put together what will be presented during the special session. Uh, we have some hope there in the fact that Senator Stuart Engel, who is the ranking member, is a friend of ours. And I say a friend of ours to the Southeast New Mexico. He's been through this process before. He understands the process and hopefully he will have some influence on how that process takes place and keeps it on, on track. Also, Senator Cliff Pearl from Roswell is also a, a member of that committee. So we do have some pretty strong voices there on the committee for Southeast New Mexico as they look at this redistricting program. So, um, hope and hope and hope that, uh, we come out with some type of, uh, a fair decision from our legislature on that process. And as we look at all the different maps, we know that those are, uh, uh, maybe not exactly what the commission had hoped for or recommended, but at the same time, keep in mind that the process is not finished. So there's still more to come. Uh, one of the things I know that's been in the news, that's probably caught your attention a lot, is a new, uh, infrastructure bill that was signed by the president this last week and one point two trillion dollars that'll be coming out, uh, to, to, uh, stimulate our economy, hopefully. Um, we know that New Mexico will probably be looking at somewhere around three point seven billion dollars of that money. It'll be coming our way for different things as far as infrastructure and, and other, other, uh, the, other items that that money will be designated for. Uh, it's really uncertain right now as far as how that money will be divvied out, uh, from the state to the local communities. But, uh, hopefully we will see something positive from that, uh, across the board here. There's some additional money in that budget that will be out, uh, for competitive, I call it competitive bid, or it will be competitive for us to compete for. There's about twelve point five billion in what they call the bridge investment program. There's another sixteen billion that's out there for major projects and substantial economic benefits to communities. So, um, we'll, we'll have to figure out exactly what those, that, those big long definitions mean exactly to us. And as I was visiting with Josh out in the lobby, how we can articulate around those things as we apply for that competitive money and see where we are. Um, of course, we all know that there's still money sitting in the state coffers right now that the governor has not released. Uh, that will prove to be, I'm sure, an interesting topic during the next thirty-day session and how that money be distributed and where it will go from there. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Do we know if they're gonna allow people in the legislative sessions?
If they're going to allow, the last words that I have had from leadership is that they will have an open Capitol. As you know, the, or as you may not know, um, they did meet in the, uh, Legislative Council did meet a couple, three weeks ago, and during the Legislative Council, they made some really drastic changes to entry, uh, to the Capitol. And, and there's a lot of controversy around that because one of the things that they did bring out is that they will be not allowing, they will not allow any firearms within the Capitol except by, uh, law enforcement and, uh, and military. Uh, some of the controversy that's out there, and I'm sure we'll see more along those lines, is that some of the legislators who travel a long distance between Santa Fe and where they live normally have firearms on their person for personal protection, which is allowed by the Constitution. So when they pull onto the Capitol grounds, will they, what will they do with those firearms? Because they are saying right now in Legislative Council that they were not going to be able to leave those in their vehicles and bring them into the parking garage within the Capitol. So, uh, as they have, and I'm looking at council, but I'm not an attorney, thank goodness. But they, they said that, um, you know, that's, that's part of your extension of your household is you've been allowed to keep that firearm in your vehicle. But as we know, that's a state property. So how are they actually gonna define that? And how are, more or less, how are they gonna control it? Some of the legislators, I can tell you from personal experience, I know that they do carry firearms within, on themselves with a concealed carry permit within the Capitol. Uh, so there's a more controversy there. And, and I may have gotten, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cordova, I may have gotten off on the weeds and that a little bit. But the, the thing we know right now is, is that the Capitol is supposed to be open to the public. They are looking at, right now, of putting metal detectors in the doors so they will allow folks to come in and make sure that everyone's safe through those metal detectors, uh, which it may be a little more constrained as far as being able to just actually walk into the Capitol and in and out. Uh, so that's, that's to come and there's a lot of work to be done between now and when the session starts, uh, toward the eight, seventeenth, eighteenth of, of, uh, January. Okay?
Uh, infrastructure bill is a great deal for one point two trillion dollars and then we get our portion of that. Uh, the other thing that we'd like to see, and when I was with the ACNM, we always push for, is sustained funding for the federal highway fund. That is a big problem right now because it hasn't been appropriated every year. There's no sustained funding for that. So hopefully sometime in the near future, we'll see some type of bill to introduce some sustained funding for that federal highway.
Commissioner Carlson, you're right. It's, it, it will be a, as all federal programs are, we all know is it will be a paper-laden project to get those funds to down to us. But the thing about it is-
It stimulates the economy better than-
There's nothing-
-infrastructure bills.
That's right. That's right. And, and, and to keep it, you know, a positive topic, I think most of our legislators right now understand the importance of keeping our roads and infrastructure in place to stimulate our economy and especially here in Southeast New Mexico, as we've seen, uh, to do that. And, and I'm gonna give the road department kudos. When I was coming in from, from, uh, Texas on Sunday, uh, actually had a truck come across from the bypass and go onto our new bypass. And I thought, man, look at that. Traffic's moving, moving smooth around and it looks nice out there. So that was, that was kinda, made me a little proud to be a part of the county and see those kinds of things going on and see that sand truck, which it was a sand truck. It was hauling a sandbox. And he pulled up there and stopped, actually stopped and looked both ways and he just went right on down that new. So that was, that was pretty encouraging to me. Had to see the pretty sign out the, out the county, on the county line. Those are really great. Really great. People notice them too, by the way, they mentioned it to me. So, yeah. Any questions? All right. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Item number eleven is the tribal request consent agenda.
Everybody good with that one? All right. Entertaining motion. Okay, entertaining motion. Well, we have a motion. Fred made it. Motion second. Please call the vote.
McCutcheon?
Commissioner Beard made it. Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Item number twelve is emergency business and we do not have any in this meeting. Item number thirteen is legislators and elected officials.
I was gonna say, quiet. Mr. Daniel Black, there's a couple of things I need to address with you that came up. Good morning.
I'm sure.
Wiped that off my face there. Um, the, the, um, what, what Jerry was talking about, the, the rules being made at Santa Fe on the firearms, I, I hope everyone's aware that that was initially directed at law enforcement as well. We weren't going to be able to, unless we were on duty, which the sheriffs all said, well, we're by statute on duty at all times anyway. And it was like, well, no, that doesn't apply here. This is a, there's a, thankfully, we had, uh, some folks like Jim Townsend, Stephanie Lord, uh, Catherine Brown, uh, all of our, our local legislators and, and others fighting for us going, why would you not want armed law enforcement officers within the Capitol just in case something happened? Or are you just gonna rely on, on, on state police, which is a, a good force to rely upon there. But why would you not have a force multiplier? So the, eventually they won that. They shouldn't have ever had to argue that. The other part of that is, and, and this is something I've considered, is by, uh, state statute, you can, you can be, uh, you can carry a concealed loaded firearm in your home, in your vehicle, and in your place of business without a license, without a license. You're allowed to do that by our state statute. And, um, why should that, and I mean, that, that, that even applies to bars. If you work in a bar, you can carry a concealed loaded firearm in there. Um, so why wouldn't the legislators be afforded that protection, that, 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 what's afforded to them in state law? Why would they not be allowed? Or the people working within the, the Capitol, why would they not be afforded that? What state statute says they can have. So, I mean, I guess they can make whatever rules they want up there and they, they do, but I, I have a real problem with that. I, I'm not necessarily, it, you go to a different capitals and you look at them and the general public is not generally allowed to carry firearms into state capitals. I mean, I, I get that. That's, that, that can be argued all day long that that, that's a right, that's not a right. I don't, I don't know. Um, but when you start talking about actual law that we have in New Mexico and going against it to make these rules, I, I, I have a serious problem, uh, with that. But, um, be that as it may, we're gonna be, it's gonna be interesting to see how things go there at the, the Capitol, um, whether we're actually gonna be heard this time, uh, be able to express our opinions and, and, and make some things happen. Um, so just, just, uh, I'll keep an eye on it, just as y'all will. Um, I'm sure we'll be spending a lot of time up there. With everything going on, uh, politically and, and some of the, uh, laws being passed, there's been a lot of retirements in law enforcement, uh, federal and local. Um, there, so there was a, the positions opened up on the, the New Mexico HIDA executive board for, uh, chair and vice chair all at once, which doesn't normally happen. Um, so, uh, Mar- our, our US Marshal, Sonia Chavez, she was elected, uh, I nominated her and she was elected to chair. And of course, she paid me back and nominated me and had, got elected as vice chair for the third time. So, um, we continue to, uh, HIDA continues to grow. Um, we continue to be very successful. I, I think everybody sees what's going on with the fentanyl. Um, everybody sees the, the, the great things that our drug task force, Commander Leos and, and, and his folks are doing out there. And I can't tout them enough. Bobby Sullivan just keeps everything together too. So I have to give them a shout out every chance I get because maybe they could take care of that noise too. Wow. Um. There you go. I thought it away. No, I didn't. But anyway- But anyway, um, we're gonna continue to see it, and we are experiencing that at the sheriff's office as well with retirements. Um, you, you saw Jesus come up here and get his twenty year award. He'll be gone next month, and that's gonna be, that's gonna fill, you know, give us a void there, and we're, we're hiring folks, but folks are, are retiring and, and moving on, and I think we're all experiencing that. The city, the cities are as well, Artesia and Carlsbad. So, just know that we're struggling, but we're, we're keeping it going, and we have a lot more activity going on in the county, uh, that we're seeing. Our, our calls for service are up, um, our, our reports are up, and if you look, we, if you come out there and look at our wall, 'cause we have pictures of all our deputies on the wall, we have a very young workforce now. Um, we, we have a lot of, of young men and women out there that, you know, we used to have, a lot, lot, a lot of folks with a lot more experience. So, um, bringing that new lieutenant in, like, like y'all approved, uh, when, when Alan came up here and gave the presentation for me, that's helping a lot. Um, we may be looking at some more changes to, uh, try and, we, we, we've gotta have these young folks properly supervised, or else we're gonna end up with some issues that we don't wanna deal with. The other thing is, we have equipment that I'm gonna be giving you a presentation on, I'll just give you a, 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 a prelude to it. Uh, the video, our video management equipment is antiquated, um, it's, we've been piecemealing it together. Um, we spend a lot of, uh, and I'm talking about for body cam and, and the, and the car cams and our, uh, and our, uh, audio recorders. It's, it's old, and it's broke down, and it's gonna cost us a lot of money to repair it, but I have, I think we can spend a little differently, and we can make it easier where we don't spend as many man hours, man and woman hours, uh, working on this. We can have a cloud based thing. It's expensive, but it's something that I, I'm gonna present to you as a budget adjustment for, uh, mid-budget, because I just, I don't know what else to do. We've gotta comply with the state law, and if we don't comply with it, Cass's life is gonna be miserable, as, as are all of ours, because they're gonna, they're gonna start coming after us for that. So, we've gotta document everything properly. So, I'll be giving you a pre-, a, a presentation on that, I'll run it through the county manager, we'll discuss it, and then, then I'll bring it to y'all, and we can, we can see what we wanna do with it. So, of course, Roberta did have good news, and, and with the, some, there was some good legislation for law enforcement. Um, our law enforcement protection fund money will start going up here in the future. Uh, we'll be getting a little more money, uh, and I think I've talked to y'all about that before. Um, that's money, basically, the state was stealing away from law enforcement. So, that's coming up. Holidays are coming up, uh, and, 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 uh, the DWI, the, the proclamation was great. I really appreciate y'all, uh, you know, supporting that. We're gonna have issues, you know, coming around with the holidays, we always do, we have, we have crashes regardless of alcohol or drug impairment, but there's gonna be crashes, and I don't know, the weather, winter's coming, right? Isn't that what they said on that, that TV show? But, anyway, I'll leave you with that, and if, if you need anything from me, know how to get ahold of me.
Thank you, Sheriff. I have a couple of comments related to conversations from Mr. Fanning and, and Sheriff regarding infrastructure and, and Capitol Outlay. Um, one of the resolutions that was in the, uh, consent portion of the agenda today was Resolution twenty-one dash one oh seven. Basically speaks to the fact that the state has new money, as identified by the LFC in their interim report in August, of one point two billion dollars, which I think is gonna, their estimate's gonna be low based on commodity prices. They also have federal monies that they've been given previously, and they're gonna get some additional federal monies from this jobs infrastructure federal legislation. So, the resolution, we've been working with our local legislators to try and support them in getting those monies earmarked in House Bill Two, the budget, the, the main reason for meeting in January, and allow this, you know, put a significant portion in there and, and then use the state calculation methodology to disperse that to local governments for infrastructure investments. Invest that money today, we'll put it to work tomorrow, people to work, right? I mean, there's, there's a, and we pulled together a lot of information that we shared with the Transportation Infrastructure Revenue Subcommittee a month or so ago about what that, what Eddie County has done. We're, we're, we're efficient users of that money, and we put a lot of our money in that pot as well, the lion's share, really. So, we're trying to advocate for the legislators to put that in House Bill Two as part of the budget. They control it, they influence, they disperse it, send it out, local government statewide, and let's go to work. Uh, so we'll be sending that up to the, to the state Capitol and everybody that will, we can, I'll also share it with the New Mexico Counties Association, County Managers affiliate, um, say, hey, we passed this today, just something to think about as the special session comes up. Um, on the twenty-third of November, Wes and I think Mr. McCroskey are gonna be in front of the Capitol Outlay, um, in front of the LFC, LFC Legislative Finance Committee to talk about Capitol Outlay. Again, working with our local legislators to try and earmark monies for our, our community, for our, for, for the county. That's coming up next week. Um, then on the, uh, we just received the three plans for county commission district boundaries, uh, and I shh sent that information to you yesterday in an email, so if you hadn't had a chance to look at your emails, have a look. It's, it's a PDF document, kind of a, pulled from a PowerPoint. Um, plans A, B, C, their overview, and then some details about each of the plans. One of the plans, I don't really care for, um, I think it's Plan B, the boundaries, you know, your commissioner in District Two, Commissioner Henry is, anyway. I think there are a couple of doable plans, but they're minor adjustments, kinda like one of those, um, uh, what are these? Squidgy things, you know, you squeeze it and part pops out here, squeeze it the other way and part pops out there.
Squidgy things, that's what they're-
Squidgy thing, yeah. It's a technical term, right? Anyway, but there's a little bit of give and take between districts, right? Um, three and four, one and four, right? I mean, it's just, but it's a balance of the precincts, right? You move a precinct out of here, you need to move a precinct.
Right.
And so, that, that's, that's what they represent, but we'll need to get together. Um, the commission will need to approve one of those plans.
Right, they usually have some public meetings. In the past, they've had one in Artesia, uh, for public input, and then also in Carlsbad. The one in Carlsbad, you could incorporate into your meeting probably to approve it, or you could do it separately and then have a third, put it on the agenda for approval. But, yeah.
So, we just need to do that by year end.
Is that changeable? I mean-
Is what changeable?
What their, you know, their A, B, C.
I think we can do kinda whatever we want.
Sure, if you had a suggestion for him, but it has to be, you know, supposedly, he has all that information as far as, they have to be contiguous, population, all of those things that the census addresses. So, uh, if you want an additional plan, then you hired him, I would assume you could contact him about that.
Oh, yeah, I could probably-
Very quickly.
Yeah, so, so look at, look at the information that was shared, and then let's have a, you know, if you've got some questions, stop by or call me, we'll, we'll come visit, whatever, and look at what those look like, and then, um, when you have a consensus or a general understanding, then we can present that at a public hearing for input. Um, a couple of the plans, I think A and C don't change a lot, and, and one of them, I didn't have all the details, but it showed, on it, on each of them, he'll have a percentage change in the district, and they change nominally. None of the plans had zero changes, or had zero deficits or additions, right? So, the, the, the things balanced, the boundaries are slightly different in order to get those precincts aligned, but, so, there, the three plans, one of the files was kinda large, so I hope it came through. If not, let me know, and we'll, we'll get them on thumb drives for you to look at, but they're, they're really PDF documents, it's not a lot of the data per se. So, um, we'll, we'll need to, we'll need to, we'll to wrap that up before year end. So, um, other than that, things are, things are going well in the county in terms of, you've seen the budget information, the revenue information, activity information, we're still active, public works. Um, the county continues to support the vaccination. Clinics, we're now doing once a week on Mondays, uh, but we continue to have high level participation, averaging about two hundred, um, participants in each of those, so that's, that's a good sign. Um, that same day, Curative also provides testing capabilities out at the Walter Gerald, same, different locations, but they're both there at the, the Walter Gerald, so if that's, if that's something, but that's on the county's website, so we'll continue to support that. Um, and I don't know if you have any questions, concerns about what's going on, I think the other reports, you know, good things are moving ahead, so. And your, the additional crossing of the PEC is, is, is in plan, as is activity on the West Loop. Um, we're working, we have to do some things with the BLM, um, before we can proceed on that portion, and we have to do some things with the Hackberry draw watershed district before we can proceed on those, but there are other work fronts that we'll be working on, uh, progressing the West Loop at this point, so things are going well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Colonel. Mr. Quinoff.
I just wanna remind everybody, I always think about people that work over the holidays, law enforcement, people in the hospital, people don't stop getting sick, you know, over the holidays, and so people are always working behind the scenes, um, you know, detention center, whatnot. So, I just always wanna recognize people around the holidays, and just thank you for your work. I wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, stay safe out there, keep taking your vitamins like I was talking about this morning, um, just take care of yourselves out there, so, thank you.
Thank you. I have a bit of good news, but I can't remember, Mr. Carlson, a blue trophy, what does that signify? It's a state championship. So, just so y'all know, the Artesia Bulldogs volleyball team did win state last week, so good for them. Great, great kids. Great group of kids, fairly young, so hopefully we'll have more to come, but, uh, really, really hard fought efforts, 'cause they had some tough games to get through to get there, so good for them. The Artesia football team's still moving, they beat Mayfield last week, which was interesting. First time Mayfield hasn't been in y'all's class and, and down to ours, so, so that was good. They play Farmington this Saturday, so if anyone wants to go see a good ballgame, uh, be down at the Bulldog Bowl, so Farmington's number one, I think we're four seed, so it should be a fun game to watch. Uh, so good things in Artesia, I just thought I'd make sure y'all knew that. Um, a, a, and then, well, you know what, I'm just gonna leave it there, the rest of it isn't very fun. So, uh, and it's been a good meeting, it's been fun. I even watched myself, what I was gonna say about the bill today, so, thank y'all, I agree with Commissioner Cordova, have a, have a great Thanksgiving, enjoy your families, that's what it's all about. You see the craziness going on out there and how quickly things can change, so please take advantage of that time with your family, enjoy them, have fun, uh, love on them, and, uh, we'll see you next time.
Thank you. Mike Chris.
Uh, I'd like to start by thanking the sheriff for providing a deputy to come down with a, a town hall meeting I held last Wednesday. That was great. Luckily, we didn't have any, uh, trouble going on there, so it was very, it was very well, uh, attended, and, you know, with a dozen people, and everybody behaved themselves, so, uh, we appreciate that. Uh, I do like the fact that, uh, we're getting the infrastructure money, it's proven the fact that there's no better way to stimulate an economy than to do the infrastructure, and, and we can use that money, and we put our money where our mouth is, and we've used our own money to do a lot of work, so, to do that. Also, uh, we would like to highlight the fact that we did have, uh, a baseball player that was up for Rookie of the Year in Trevor Rogers, you know, 'cause, you know, he comes from Carlsbad. Good one, I mentioned him, 'cause that's a pretty neat deal, but, uh, that's basically all I have. Mr. Beard.
I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner Henry had to say. I happened to be listening to Gene Dow on the way up here this morning, and he was pretty high on that volleyball team. They won how many games after they lost to Goddard to their state championship, and had to beat Goddard twice on the way to get there? That's kind of a big deal. That's a long way through that back bracket, but anyway, congratulations to them. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and, you know, these lists of awards are phenomenal, you know, that people that are spending that much time, and this is not the first list, working for Eddie County says something about the workforce in our county, and, you know, I, I think this is a pretty big deal down here, and I think there's a lot of counties out there that would do well to emulate some of the things we have done and are doing. Anyway, I'll let it go at that. Thank all of you.
Thank you. Um, I'd also like to just thank the sheriff, our duly elected sheriff, I wasn't aware he had anybody didn't like him till a little earlier in the meeting today. But, uh, we do appreciate our sheriff, and, and Eddie County stands a hundred percent behind, behind Mark Cage, we appreciate his service and leadership to our county. I think the, the youth of the sheriff's department has a lot to say for the leadership in the sheriff's department, and that their recruiting is probably second to none, and there's a lot of good young men and women lined up to, to go to work for Sheriff Cage. Um, other than that, we have, um, our church is gonna do a, a live nativity, along with many other churches, kinda gonna be a multi-denominational live nativity, and wanna invite everybody to that, it's gonna be the seventeenth and eighteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth of December, and so if you wanna participate in that, just reach out to me, um, we're kinda organizing that, it should be pretty good, it's gonna be the seventeenth and eighteenth, Friday and Saturday, from six to eight PM. And, uh, so we may have reached out to some of your churches already, and if not, we probably will be, and looking for participation there. It should be a really great live nativity filled with a few musical numbers and things like that, and something good to do the weekend before Christmas, so, um, just like to invite everybody to that. But we do, we do appreciate, uh, all the work that goes on Eddie County, looking forward to a great holiday season, and as Cynthia taught us earlier, and as we passed our, uh, oh, whatever that thing was, the-
Proclamation.
Proclamation, yeah, it's a proclamation, please have a safe, safe holiday season, nothing can be ruined, nothing can ruin a holiday more quickly than irresponsibility, so we urge everybody to be responsible and stand up and take, take accountability for their actions, so. Other than that, I think, uh-
We don't have any executive session today, so there's only item seventeen, uh, of the agenda, which is adjourned.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Captain.
Yes.
Beard.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.